Tuesday, April 11th, 2017 to order. Could all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now take the roll call. Holly Ben, she's absent. She had indicated that in an email. Robert Kulikowski?
Here.
Aaron Levitt Smith is excused. Ronald Condro, absent. Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice, here. Elizabeth Burt?
Here.
Mark Drake, absent. Gary Lungarini?
Here.
Very good. One, two, three. So I'm going to appoint both Elizabeth and Gary as regular members this evening. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the March 28th meeting. Mr. Kulikowski, if you would lead us through that, please.
Hope everybody read the novel. It was nice, light reading. Any changes or comments on page one? Page two? Page three? Page five? Page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Page 15? Thank you very much, Janice.
We move to accept the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Mr. Kulikowski abstains. The others voted in the affirmative. Thank you, Bob. All right. So, old business. We have an open public hearing, which was opened at our last meeting. Application number 17-01 of Dorset Crossing LLC owner for the revision of the layout of the temporary cul-de-sac resulting in the re-subdivision of the properties located at 115 Castor Bridge Crossing. Assessors map H04 Block 403 Lot 13A-G and 130 Castor Bridge Crossing assessors map H04 Block 403 Lot 13A through D, Zone PAD. And just as a reminder, the public hearing must be closed by 5:00 to 2017. So I see we have someone, either the applicant or someone representing the applicant. If you could just identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Dave Zacks. I'm a special engineer with FA Heston Associates. And what we have before us tonight is sort of, I refer to it as sort of a technical re-subdivision because we're here to basically move around and easement and reconfigure the roadway a bit, but not really add any new lots and not really change any of the real dimensions of the lots that are, that were part of the original subdivision. I brought along with me an aerial photo. It shows you the overall Dorset Crossing development, Hot Meadow Street over there on the right-hand side of the lot. We have Dorset Crossing, which is a public road, which now has a traffic light at it down at Route 10, Hot Meadow. And that road was constructed to town standards and it comes to a, what I refer to as a temporary mini roundabout there. It looks sort of like a cul-de-sac, but it's actually a mini roundabout. And then Castor Bridge Crossing, which is a public road, was extended sort of to the south up to, just past the driveway that was constructed back a couple of years ago for, to accommodate the special needs housing that was constructed on that lot. This is the East Point apartment complex that was finished last year. And then this is the medical building that was built first back now a number of years ago. And there's additional pad sites available around the medical building. And what we're focusing on this evening is this portion of the property that is really sort of southerly of Saxton Brook. This is Saxton Brook, which comes into the property, crosses back over to Riverbend's property and then works its way back to Route 10 and crosses under Route 10 in a culvert under the state highway. There's actually two lots here that are created by the right-of-way that was created for Castor Brook Crossing, which is 13AD and 13AG. Now, the overall master plan that's always been envisioned for this part of town and really Dorset Crossing was part of it was to create a new roadway that would come in across from Woolcock and then cut across, this land is also owned by Riverbend Associates in the north of us, cut across here. That's why this roundabout was put here rather than a stop sign or a traffic light. And then this would continue on and then potentially go through all the property that Riverbend has to the south of us and out to the Hoskins Road, County Road area. That's always been the vision of a long-term master plan. It provides an access point to a large piece of land that Riverbend has to the north of us that goes all the way back out to County Road. But this portion was built as part of Dorset Crossing and Castor Bridge Crossing was built to town standards again, just past this driveway. And then because it was really just a dead end at that location, we worked with town staff at the time and upgraded the road. It was an old dirt road that crossed over Saxton Brook with a couple of undersized culverts underneath it at the time. We paved that piece of road and then built a temporary cul-de-sac. You can sort of see it right there on the photo. And that was really to allow the town's plows to turn around and, you know, emergency vehicles and that type of thing to have an access, temporary access. And an easement was put around that temporary cul-de-sac at the time. Now recently, I mean, it was always envisioned that either a permanent cul-de-sac or permanent cul-de-sac would be, it's always going to be a temporary cul-de-sac because the master plan calls potentially the extension of this road. So if this road is extended someday in the future, this cul-de-sac would go away one way or the other. So it's a permanent temporary cul-de-sac, however you want to refer to it as. But it was always envisioned that the road would be extended to town standards to this location when a development would occur on either AD or AG and/or if the road was extended further to the south. Recently, there's been interest expressed by developers who are looking at these lots as potential development, but there's always a bit of a stumbling block in the discussions because the road just kind of dies and it's just sort of paved out there. It's not very attractive and not very functional. And so what the developers at Dorset would like to do is extend the road, build that temporary permanent cul-de-sac to town standards, so it looks like a permanent cul-de-sac. Extend the sidewalks, extend all the utilities, bring everything, change the culvert out from the old antiquated culvert to the proper sized box culvert at that location. So bring everything up to town standards and then have these lots available more attractive for development. So what happens is, you know, because of the way the regulations are written in law, this ends up being a subdivision that affects, a re-subdivision that affects lots AD and AG. Because what we'd like to do, just because it works out better, is just construct the cul-de-sac over on AD just works out better from an overall planning perspective. So again, the road would be extended to town standards, new culvert installed here where Saxton Brook is. And then we would build a temporary cul-de-sac at that location to town standards and then move the easement over onto that lot and remove the easement off of that lot. So it's sort of a technical swap, but it just works out better this way from overall layout perspective as it affects these two lots. Doesn't really affect the public very much, they wouldn't know the difference, but the general layout of the two lots to make them the most attractive. This layout worked, we believe this layout works the best. We've been through wetlands. They have approved this crossing and culvert design. And staff has done a good job reviewing the documents. You have reports from them. I've been through it. They're both their reports, the engineer and the planner. We have no concerns with, we want to make those conditions of approval of this application. We'll look at staff, deal with their comments that are mostly technical, sort of housekeeping kind of comments, don't really affect the design. So we're comfortable accepting those as conditions of approval. And that's basically the application. Be happy to answer any questions.
I know that I've driven down there a couple of times as the area was developed and you're right, it just kind of ends, you know, there was a pile, there's a pile of material out there, there's a little dirt road that ends, it goes somewhere.
Right.
What's the advantage of flipping the cul-de-sac?
It opens up this lot a lot better. This lot has a tendency to neck down very fast. You know, it's large, sort of an area, but not from a practical point of view. See, it's much larger, but it necks down and it has a sewer easement, it has a conservation easement on it, things like that. So this lot, pretty much right up until here, is very developable. So as it turns out, in dealing with it this way, it opens up a little bit better land over on that side.
So be more worried?
You know, I suppose you could keep drawing the plans and come up with different layouts. You know that one way or the other, differences of opinion, but, you know, between ourselves and the developer looking at this, we think it kind of works better that way.
So you're not moving the cul-de-sac down farther, you're just flipping it to the other side in the exact same spot?
Yeah, extending the road a little bit.
Extending the road, but it'll be all to town standards and it'll have all the utilities and I think right now, the only thing that's on this property is the town's old interceptor, sanitary interceptors over on the property, but, you know, underground electric telephone communications, everything stops back at the special needs lot and doesn't come across. So again, really, this is an attempt, if we extend the road, put it in permanent, you know, clean up the lots, really make it attractive to potential developers that are looking at the lots. But again, from what I understand, they come in to kind of look around us. It's sort of like the old days, you know, we're, yeah, that's where we're going to build the golf course someday and, you know, don't worry about it, you know, that type of thing. You know how people are today with development. If it's not ready to go or whatever, they'll find someplace else to go. So that's really what the point of this is.
Yeah, I can see where it could complicate a developer's plan. You know, if you have the cul-de-sac protruding into either parcel, you know, they're going to say, well, how long is that going to be there?
Right. So here, we got it tucked right in just as you come over the side a little bit. So it opens up a nice area in here. Seems to work out with the various sketches we've done and things like that.
What do you expect will eventually be constructed on those lots? Is that housing?
No, it's something in a mixed-use type of frame. It's obviously not going to be retail or anything like that back there, but maybe another special needs housing of some sort. I know there's been some conversations with those folks. Probably single building kind of development. I don't see a lot of small buildings or anything like that.
How much is each AG and AD in acreage? How large are they? It's hard to tell.
D is 2.48 acres and G is 4.54 acres. But again, this is a little bit misleading in fact that it tends to neck down pretty quick. So from a real practical point of view, there's not as much land there. I personally think AD's the better lot.
Comments from town staff?
Mr. Chairman, you do have a report from staff regarding this. Our recommendation goes through the review and results in an attachment which formulates a motion in a favorable mode manner. That motion was laid out in a conditional format and again, familiarity with the types of approval that are under your jurisdiction. You can approve a subdivision, approve a subdivision with modifications, or conditionally approve a subdivision. There's kind of three levels. You're probably aware of the term, you've always, approve the subdivision with conditions. Now, from a technical standpoint, those are modifications to an application. Under the statutes, they allow you to do a conditional approval. And the primary purpose of that conditional approval is, revolves around an applicant's ability to bond for the road improvements. Historically, the commission would demand the applicant post surety for the proposed public improvement, but there were changes to the statutes of four years ago that put that decision on the applicant. So the applicant can choose to bond or not bond his project. So it puts the commission or the town in a unique situation that you're approving the project with no surety that the road would ever be built, yet the land could transfer. So the fallback that we're recommending for the commission is what's called a conditional approval. In essence, it allows the applicant to get approved approvals from the commission. The mylar's are stamped conditional. Until such time the conditions are met, that conditional approval is not removed. And until it is removed, the title to property cannot transfer. The applicant can always choose to come back and post full surety for the public improvement and remove the condition. So it's a way of protecting you as a commission and the town with regards to making sure that the public improvements are built prior to transfer. Because the worst thing that would want to happen is both parcels to sell and then someone to ask, when are you building the road for me? It's our understanding that the applicant fully intends to build the road in a timely manner associated with potential development on the property. But again, the conditional approval we are recommending will protect you with regards to that public improvement. I think it's something you have rarely utilized in Simsbury, but again, it kind of pushes you in that direction since there were changes to the state statute.
So I noticed in the draft motion for approval that there is reference to the Town Engineers' The Conservation Commission also had a set of special conditions. Does that stand with their permit?
That would stand independent. With regards to the Conservation Commission's amendments, Mike and I were very careful not to intermix the two. So the Conservation Commission's approvals are standard with regards to pre-construction meeting, erosion, settlementation control, any place inspected, prior to any construction or grading activities. The Conservation Commission did not complicate their approval process by incorporating Jeff Shay's comments like, change the guardrail type to core 10, which is a burnt rail, it's the rusted rail. It's not an inland wetlands matter, that's an engineering matter. So that's why those are incorporated into the motion for approval. And their minor technical, we'll say drafting revisions that need to be done in the plans.
How about the legal part of changing the easement?
That would be solidified in any land transaction. When those plans are recorded, along with them come easements and deeds.
Who owns the road?
Town of Simsbury.
And so the cul-de-sac would be constructed by the property owner, but it would be owned by the town?
The present layout has ownership in the town of Simsbury. The new layout will actually require the developer to give some additional land to the town of Simsbury to construct the road and there will be a title transfer there.
So the road would continue to belong to the town of Simsbury?
Yes. What's unique in this is ultimately before the town accepts the road or the new layout of the road, under 8-24, the developer has to send it to the board of selectmen. Under 8-24, it will come back to you to make a determination as a planning commission whether the transfer of title is according to the PLCD and you reference your group subdivision.
But we're just talking about the cul-de-sac modifications, not?
The cul-de-sac, yeah.
Not an extension of the road to the south?
We'll say the original road layout is within the existing deed-in right-of-way that was given to the town of Simsbury. It's only, in essence, you had a Q that is changing to a P and part of the P is slightly different shaped. So in the northwesterly quadrant, there's a land transaction that needs to occur.
So the extension, the future extension of the road would once again be a town road?
Yeah, manager, I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll try and, the town of Simsbury has already been deeded rights all the way to Riverbend's land. The modification, here's the original layout. So the town has?
Easement right there.
There was no easement language there because it was temporary in nature. When this new layout comes out, they will give either the town an easement over that land for the purpose of this temporary cul-de-sac, or they will deed that land to the town. And all likelihood, it will potentially be an easement because it's not intended to be permanent. But the town would have rights to grade, maintain, and make improvements.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, so I guess, is there any public comment? This is a public hearing. No public comment?
No.
So I think that we have the opportunity to close the public hearing. Correct? Mike or Janice?
Yes.
Okay, so looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for, let me just remember here, application 17-01 of Dorset Crossing LLC for the re-subdivision of the layout of the temporary cul-de-sac resulting in a re-subdivision of the properties located at 115 Castor Bridge Crossing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so is Gary seconded, Bob made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Okay. Now we can move on to deliberating the application. Application 17-01, Dorset, of Dorset Crossing LLC owner for the revision of the layout of the temporary cul-de-sac. Any deliberations?
Doesn't sound like complicated.
No.
With the conditions.
Yeah, with the conditions.
So there's a draft motion for approval. Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we use the verbiage from attachment A of the draft motion for approval with conditions.
So the conditions, okay, are in the text of the draft motion.
Conditions one through eight.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So Alan seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see that under new business that the west town staff has anything to add. There are no new applications to receive?
No, we do have one.
We have a referral.
Referral, sorry. No new applications.
It's not very often I get to get you on protocol.
Boy, you have my coffee.
Excuses, excuses.
On my agenda worksheet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a referral under CGS 8-3A, referral to the zoning commission on zoning commission application number 17-13 of Andrew Quirk, Kratzert, Jones and Associates Incorporated Agent for a proposed text amendment to Article 10, Section E.3 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to permit the zoning commission to reduce the side parking setback by five feet and require additional landscaping. So, Mr. Quirk?
Good evening, Chair.
Welcome back.
I wanted to make sure we were clear with CGS 8-3A, not 30G.
I made a point, I can say.
Yeah, we've been working with staff on applications where there's a particular parking area location regulation in the zoning regulations. And we are, we've been working with staff and it was recommended that we pursue a text amendment and put together one. And then, of course, that requires a referral to this commission for their recommendation to the zoning commission. The regulation, the way it stands now under Article 10, and I've included in the application, special regulations E.3 for the location of parking areas, states that parking spaces and circulation drives shall not be located within 25 feet of the front property line or within 15 feet of the side property line or within 10 feet of the rear property line. And then we're proposing to insert the text, the zoning commission may reduce the side parking setback by five feet and require additional landscaping. And then it continues that where parking areas are residential zone, parking spaces and circulation drives shall not be located within the front, rear, or side yards. So the purpose of the change in the regulations, again, is only to the side setbacks, not the front, not the rear. Also, it does not apply to parking areas in non, abutting non-residential, or abutting residential zones. It applies only in conditions where there are residentially zoned properties abutting each other on a common side property line. The reduction would only, would be only by five feet, so that 15-foot side property line setback to the parking area would be reduced from 15 to 10. And we gave, we thought it was best to leave flexibility for the commission to determine how to handle the additional landscaping. The purposes, we see it, there's many purposes to the side setback to the parking areas, whether it be for green space, for screening, for open areas between properties and different uses. They all sort of relate to landscaping. And how that could be handled is that the commission, attending on the particularities of the property, may require that if it's reduced by five feet, that a permanent fence be put up or screening, or the same quantifiable area be landscaped somewhere else on the property. So the total amount of landscaping would stay the same or increase. So there's a number of ways that that could be addressed. It's an option for the commission. They don't have to grant it. But if there's a particular property where for economic development or the restrictions of the property, that could be best developed with a more flexible design, a more efficient parking lot area and provide the landscape with somewhere else, we think it would help the development of certain properties. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or?
This is proposing a change to a commercial site next to a commercial site, a residential next to residential?
Any non-residential. So you've got commercial zones, you've got industrial zones, as long as it's not abutting a residentially zoned property.
So it only applies to commercial and commercial?
Or industrial, industrial, or any non-residential zone, correct. Now, if it's a parking area abutting a residential zone, then in addition to the 15-foot side yard setback, the regulation says it has to meet the required side yard setback, which is typically, I believe, more stringent, I think in all cases, it's more stringent than the 15-foot parking setback. For example, in the general business zone, I believe it's 25. So if you have a business zone abutting a residential, that parking lot would have to be 25 feet from the property line. This amendment would not allow for that reduction because it's abutting a residential zone. So the residential zones are protected the same.
Just for a frame of reference, if you had a driveway in your, at your residence and you're part of a residential property, you could have a driveway within 10 feet, can't you, of a side yard?
There are inconsistencies in our regulations with regards to that.
I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe the parking setbacks are in the zoning regulations. So as a subdivision, you could put the driveway closer, is that correct? Because it's not under the zoning, site plan standards.
The, and Mr. Chairman, as in most instances in a commercial zone, if you had a forty-acre site, a large business zone, and you were doing multiple tenants within that site, in most instances, your setbacks between drive aisles and parking spaces would be a minimum of ten feet internal to the site. Ten feet gives you adequate space to do a street tree, you know, whether it's a maple or an oak, back a curve, back a curve, and that tree will mature to standard height within that ten-foot aisle. So if you, you look at this instance, as a street develops, under our original, under our code, if you had an office complex, right now, their, their parking or drive aisle is supposed to be fifteen feet from our property. The next property would have to have another fifteen feet, which would be thirty. So if I have two small, two-acre sites, two acres, and two acres with a hundred feet of frontage, or two hundred feet of frontage, whatever they exist, they would have thirty feet between those two buildings, or those two sites. But if I owned a larger parcel and did multiple buildings, the code allows you to have ten feet between these things.
But not at the property line?
But not at the property line. So it's trying to look at the development of a corridor in a manner that allows some flexibility, given the nature of development and what it impacts. It's not going to a zero lot line, you know, in some instances, on development, if you're master planning it, or planned unit development, you can have zero lot lines. So this isn't going to that, but it is recognizing the fact, if one landowner did ten feet, the other landowner has to do a minimum of ten feet. So you would have twenty feet of landscaping between two properties. And if one landowner was required to do street trees in his ten feet, that wouldn't negate the other landowner, when they develop their property, to also do a row of street trees. So you would have a double row of street trees in that twenty feet. We are, as Mike pointed out in conversations, of the Mackenzie challenge, which is consistency with any reduction of a standard, that it has to be quantifiable. And on the zoning side, we're trying to quantify where an applicant would be eligible for this reduction, which becomes difficult in Simsbury, because there is no traditional landscaping standard. And as Simsbury zoning code says, the applicant shall landscape their property. Does that mean, you know, the difficulty is, what does that mean? So it has to, in essence, be quantifiable. So if there's this kind of a standard of doing street trees of forty feet on center and along a thousand-foot property line, that would, I'm just kidding, should not require fifty trees, that the applicant potentially would be allowed to do this reduction if they did a substantial increase to that and planted seventy-five trees on their site. But the commission wouldn't just be able to make the reduction without something quantifiable to support the reduction. It could be, in the general nature of the business zone, we allow the applicant to reduce the side yard setback and not do any additional requirements. That wouldn't pass the Mackenzie challenge. As we rewrite our zoning code, we will attempt to be more quantifiable.
Sitting the table.
It's been my experience that when text amendments are proposed, that it's really for a specific location. Is that the case with this application?
We did start with a specific location, yeah. It was on Hop Meadow Street and twelve twenty-five Hop Meadow Street. It's presently paved across the property line on both properties. And it's an area that's looking to be redeveloped. We've met several times.
Is that Andy's?
No.
No, it's twelve.
What is that, Wagon?
The wagon.
Yes.
Where literally you're paved from property line, over property lines, over another property line, you know, so there'll be five properties over, in essence, two thousand feet, and no one knows, if you drove down the street, no one on the commission could identify where those property lines are. But over time, titles have transferred. So there are owners who, in essence, share common asphalt.
Right. And I want to give credit to staff and to Jamie, because we, we really kind of, we went through several iterations on the plan and different ways of approaching this, whether it was focused as a redevelopment or a new development. And the suggestion was, well, let's see what we can do to amend the regulation, to make it more developable, and not try to compromise the use of the regulations, but see if there's a modification that.
So what, what advantage does this give to a developer?
The traffic flow is improved. We're able to fit a parking lot layout that instead of being, let's say, a forty-five-degree parking, which is less efficient, we're at sixty-degree parking by picking up an additional five feet. The traffic flow in the parking there are greatly improved.
And aesthetically, the advantage is more landscape?
Under the traditional code, you would have thirty feet, but you had a fifteen on property A, fifteen on property B, for a total of thirty feet. If we had quantifiable landscaping code, you would have, you know, say, twenty trees on property A and twenty trees on property B in that thirty feet. What the code's allowing someone to, in essence, to apply for is to reduce it by five feet, you know, and we use for, just double the landscaping. So you will actually get more aesthetics in twenty feet than the code requires them to do in thirty. The ability it gives them. And again, it, it's only giving it at five-foot increments. So the commission could grant it on one property, not grant it on the other, or the other property may not need it for the redevelopment of that parcel in an efficient manner. So the net result of the development of two properties could be twenty-five feet. Worse, it's not really worse case, but in this scenario, the, the smallest reduction would be twenty feet, between two commercial properties, ten and ten.
So basically, you're increasing the amount of paving?
In this particular case, shifting, because of the way the alignment would be. The particular site has a building that they want to maintain, and there's a property line to maintain. So we've got two solid endpoints. The building's not going to move, property line's not going to move. If this amendment was not made, it would be forty-five-degree parking that would go deeper into the lot to meet, meet the parking requirements. By shifting to sixty-degree parking, it's more efficient, it's probably the same amount of impervious area, but it's a more efficient use and circulation of the area.
Impervious surfaces regulated by another section of regulation, regardless of setbacks and others, they have a limit that they can go to. Again, this allows someone to reorientate a site, potentially in a more efficient manner than the present code allows.
Well, what's, what's the potential for some unintended consequence, or a negative effect, if this text amendment is approved?
I mean, history tells us what's viewed as positive and negative. But with regards to negative, it would be a commission who doesn't require any additional landscaping. A commission who views the regulation and says, well, in this instance, we'll allow you to do it, but in my example, you were required to do twenty street trees, twenty sufficient, we don't need anymore, or we don't need you to do understory planting, or we won't require you to do fencing, or, you know, there's always the potential, I wouldn't say the negative side of it, is in essence, it's the commission's ability to follow through on the requirements of their regulations. And I think, you know, you know, when, when planning had a joint meeting with zoning, I think that subject matter came up, that you have design guidelines, you have zoning regulations, and then some development occurred in town that may not be in perfect alignment with the goals and objectives of those documents. And I think, you know, that always can occur, because commissions are regulatory in nature, and they vote on whether to approve or deny. So with regards to negative impacts, if, from my perspective, there's negative impacts potentially on every action by any commission. I think the key is, is do they follow through the regulations? I think the potential discretion, Bill, is a commission not requiring increased landscaping at something quantifiable as it relates to allowing a developer to push five feet closer to a property line. Again, this discussion began at, we just are going to pave right up to the property line. What staff vehemently debated the merits of, of the regulation's ability to allow an applicant to do that.
If I can, in a way, and I think this was a good resolution, it, it takes some pressure off of staff, having to look at a new building where there's existing paving, and having that scenario where, well, it's paved today, and none of the regulations apply. And this is a flexible design, and I would expect staff to say that we would have a layout meeting the regulation, and then of, and then an alternate layout with this modification to present to the commission for them to be able, you know, because it's not changing the standard regulation, it's giving the zoning commission the bit they may allow it. So I would expect there would be alternates presented to show both to the commission, to demonstrate the differences.
Okay, so our role in this referral is to make a decision as to whether the proposed text amendment is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Consistent or inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the two thousand and seven P O C D.
Right, so I'm looking at the, the chapters of that document that Jamie just referred to. First is natural resources. I don't really see this as an issue. Open space, agricultural resources, historic resources, these are things we want to protect. Scenic resources, community character, maybe there's a little bit there.
Maybe.
All right, if we start expanding side parking lots, future by design, special economic development, I guess a case could be made that this proposed text amendment would increase the viability of a, of a development. I'm not sure what you had in mind, Mr. Quirk, about housing, if any, in this, but it's not, really doesn't matter?
Non-residential, residential.
That's right, this is.
Apply.
Okay, so as I see it, there are two, two building blocks that we should consider, you know, either the effect on community character, positive or negative, and also economic development. Of course, to, to be consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, it should support or improve community character and economic development. So kind of putting the, the fence around it that way a little bit. What do we think?
As to show the text amendment, you don't know what to think. You don't know where it's going to come down. If this is a precursor to improving zoning regulations, if this would allow that, or at least sets the table for that kind of thing, that makes some difference. Am I making sense? Would, would, would it be likely if you don't improve zoning regulations, would tighten this up, or?
In.
What Mr. Quirk said appealed to me.
In most instances, in municipalities I have worked in for commercial zones, in most instances, they will allow abutting commercial developments to put parking in drive aisles within half a side yard setback, with the provision of appropriate landscaping and door screening between the two. Because again, it looks at, if everybody's familiar with, you just have an application on East Point and Dorset Crossing. You look at that as a multi-phase development. When it was approved, you had landscape islands of ten feet, fifteen feet, eight feet, six feet between development paths. In the end, you may have six different owners out there. You're going to place those property lines after the fact under planned unit development. The difficulty is on small sites, you cannot utilize the planned unit development section of the regulations, which allow flexibility in the zoning code. The planned unit development is looking at slightly larger sites that are looking at the preservation and reorganization of the building blocks that are already there. If I have an isolated standalone site, if I apply the general code, there's no flexibility in the footprint. So if I, I have a site that's two hundred feet wide, and I start applying the zoning code to it, I'm left with a very small footprint in the middle.
So maybe that was by design.
Well, I'm not sure if they wanted.
To maintain the community character.
You, you're looking at the difference between a viable commercial space or a drive-up ATM teller that fits in the middle of the site. I don't think the intent.
It might be a little severe, Jamie.
And I'm using that as an example to show the severity of some of the parcels we have in town that.
Yeah, I'm, I, I have a little bit of concern that, that, you know, we're going to allow the parking spaces to be closer on abutting commercial or, or non-residential properties. That's what this says.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And the question for us is, does that impact community character or economic development?
And environment, there is, there's going to be more runoff? If it results in more parking, it's going to result in more runoff.
Okay, right. This isn't really going to affect the, the impervious space, or impervious material. This only affects the space between two parking lots, to say, for lack of a better term.
But if you're allowing the parking lot to be bigger so that it can go into that space, you're increasing.
No, we're not changing the impervious.
Not changing the maximum impervious surface that can be located on the site.
Exactly.
You're not.
That, that does not affect that.
If I may, Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate, but usually going back to the particular site and, and community character, for example, there's a structure there that was advised to try to keep the building. For example, on that site, by being able to move it five feet over, keep the building, and have the proper spacing between the, you may, in certain instances, may, not all, be able to better use and keep existing buildings where you have this option. And I think that's the type of thing that would have to be presented, that if we follow the standard regulation, the proposal would be to probably take this building down. By being able to shift it over, not more parking, but move it into a different location.
So the proposed.
You might be able to have more flexibility to work around, whether it be historical structures, or, or whatever the constraints on property are.
Right, now the way you're presenting it, it would be the exception, the, the commission may reduce.
Right.
I would like to see some wording here that accents that, so that it doesn't become the standard, and that people just read it through, oh yeah, we can do that, let's do it. And then it becomes a common practice to allow it, so they can have it throughout the town.
As I mentioned, in, in most codes that I've written for municipalities, which are multiple, that in commercial zones, you do allow flexibility when two, I mean, I wrote a regulation in community where there's a hundred-foot buffer between industrial and residential. In the industrial zone, there's a fifty-foot setback. So that meant when industrial was next to industrial, I still needed a hundred feet between two, basically, if I did a Walmart Supercenter, or Walmart warehouse and an Amazon warehouse, I had to have a hundred feet between the two. It was, it was kind of no different than if I was in residential. So in some municipalities, they've allowed the reduction, when you have two like venues, but not going to zero. Zero is a planned unit development, that gives them the ultimate flexibility. This allows the redo of a site. Again, if we, trying to use an example. If we had two acres of pavement with one building on it, and I want to take those two acres and redevelop them into one acre sites, and I want to sell one and sell the other. Once I create that line in the middle, I would need to go to fifteen feet and fifteen feet, when today, it's paved all the way across. What this regulation says is if you make that line where it may be paved all the way across, instead of having thirty feet, you would have twenty feet. It's a reduction of a maximum of ten, when you look at five and five of both properties.
Possibly more screening.
And potentially, it, the commission should require additional landscaping in that area, so that, you know, as you're driving by at forty-five miles an hour, noticing the difference. between 20 and 30 feet should be negligible. And I don't think it should become a practice by the commission. It should become a fallback on sites that benefit from better development, not more development.
The quantifiable part of that additional landscaping, that comes from zoning then?
That comes from zoning.
Okay, so we're just saying, this is something they can't, may, may take advantage of, and if they do, zoning's going to tell them, you need to plant those trees, you need to do something more than what's currently in the ranks.
And Mr. Rice's defense, they should exercise that discretion. I can't guarantee that they.
Let your boot check.
I think you know me well enough that I will do my best.
I hope you live to be 200.
So Jamie.
I don't know about that.
This is referring to commercial sites.
Non-residential.
So where does it say non-residential? I don't see that.
It's within the section, within Article 10 only applies to residential.
Okay, so the part that you want to talk about, okay.
Well, in the same, in the same statement, the last sentence is, which says, where parking area is above residential, a residential zone, it goes on to say has to meet the building setbacks. So we're not replacing that sentence, that sentence remains.
So where would those parking spaces and circulation drives be located?
When you bought a residential zone, they'd have to be within the building setback framework, which in a business zone is the side yard setback, I believe, is 25 feet from the property line. So if you had a business adjacent to a residential zone, you'd have 25 feet from the parking field to the property line.
Okay, so the front, rear, or side yards is the area that cannot be developed?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Whereas in the business zone, there's, there's building setbacks that are, and then you have parking setbacks that are not as stringent as the building setbacks.
The request to change rates does not impact front yard setback or rear yard setback, only side yard. So it's the space between the building as you drive, parallel to the site down the street.
Always worries me about how people in the future are going to use that. I hear your point, that that's a fear for anything we do. It's like rewriting the Bible for a bunch of atheists sometimes. I'm not sure it matters.
Leave the hell to bring it up, really.
Property is side and front.
Excuse me?
So the building is put sideways on a lot.
Doesn't change what the yards are.
The front.
Still the front.
Is still on the road.
Correct.
Okay.
If there was an alternative interpretation, I'm sure engineers and applicants would love to utilize that standard by changing where the front door is, changes where your front yard setback is.
Yeah.
Front yard setback is associated with the location of its frontage on a road, not building placement. It doesn't matter where the front door is, it matters where the building and its association to the road lies.
And there's a pretty good definition of the yards, like for corner lots, and there's a lot of sketches in the regulations.
And if it's on a corner lot, there are two front yards.
Right.
So this, this doesn't affect a building which fronts on two streets. It only affects the building next to a building without a screening, just a driveway.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral to the zoning commission on application 17 dash, that's zoning commission application number 17-13, that states that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development if the commission utilizes the new regulation to maintain or enhance community character or to improve economic development opportunities.
Do we want to get landscaping in there too?
That's in the proposed text.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Well, I'll just make a statement. I'm not a big fan of text amendments, to be honest with you, but it looks like this will clean up some inconsistencies that exist today and give the zoning commission a little more flexibility with some of the existing properties that we have in town to go ahead and redevelopment, redevelop those. So that's, I think this can help the zoning commission. I think the proposed text amendment where it says that they may reduce the side yard parking setback is the kicker there, where they can say no. And so I think this, this is within our purview to go ahead and say that this is a good, a good thing for now. I know we're in the midst of redoing a lot of zoning, but this, I think this will help going forward.
Any other comments, discussion?
I agree.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to have a positive referral? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So Alan opposed. Any abstentions? Okay, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 positive and 1 opposed. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sholder. Good evening.
Good evening.
You've got three minutes.
Under our agenda, we're going into POCB discussion on the draft. So with regards to meeting minutes, in essence, we're moving into a workshop phase.
Okay.
So it would be okay, you should let Janice go home and leave it an hour, and staff will note the general scope of the discussion and the timing of the term.
Yep, that's fine. SCTV workshop.
Do you want this, leave this up?
So the question is, you know, truly.
SCTV can choose to stay live or sign off this evening with their thanks for being here with us to this point, since your intent is to have a general discussion on the draft POCB.
All right, so we'll leave it up to SCTV to determine whether to keep recording. Good evening.